The way I just done two eighty-six, you'd be able to turn south.
Want to welcome everyone to tonight's town council meeting if everyone could please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yep, it's fine to be seated for the prayer if you want to be, uh, cause I was asked to share an announcement first. Poki Pickett passed on Sunday and the funeral is going to be this Friday. It's being held at Kircher Bowl Funeral Home and visitation is going to be eleven from two to two, eleven to two, and then the service at two o'clock. So Kircher Bowl Funeral Home on this Friday for Poki Pickett, for those of you who knew this, uh, really important man, part of my church, let us pray. Father, the events recently remind us what a wonderful privilege and blessing it is that we have where we can come together to debate, discuss, and deliberate things in a spirit of peace and as free men and women. And so tonight we give you thanks, Lord, for those who serve and represent this town and for those who come to share their points of view. Lord, may all that is done this evening glorify you and may we do it all in a spirit of peace and love as we were taught by our Lord and Savior and whose name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Maybe Sandy? This time I'd like to call the Sheridan Town Council meeting to order. Liz, if you could do roll call. Here.
Here. Here.
Eric.
Here.
Levi.
Here.
Long.
Here.
My.
Here.
We do have a horn.
Everyone have a chance to look at the minutes from September second, um, if, if so, are there any corrections, comments, or approval?
I'll make a motion when except the minutes from the September second meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and second is presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. We have three special presentations this evening and we're going to start off with the first one with NDOT and State Route forty-seven project and this is, um,
Jennifer.
Jennifer Beck.
Yes, I'm gonna hand, I'm gonna, uh, pass a flyer out. You guys can hand it down.
You might check to see if that mic's on when you go back. There's a
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Okay, for the audience today, I did bring a handout. So on your way out, make sure you grab one at the back table if you want some information on our schedule. Uh, so, um, for those I don't know, uh, my name is Jennifer Beck. I'm a project manager with NDOT and I've been working with the town of Sheridan for quite a few years now to get improvements on uh, thirty-eight and forty-seven. Luckily, we got thirty-eight done and we're really, really close to getting forty-seven started. Um, real quick, I wanted to just go over the high level scope of the project for anyone that hasn't heard or hasn't been to any past public meetings. We will be fully reconstructing State Route forty-seven. Uh, we will be widening closer to county line. Uh, where we will get the shoulders to match the width of forty-seven as you go into Boone County. So as you're heading east, we'll just be widening and putting new surface pavement on. And then once we get into town, right around Wesco Boulevard or Parkway is where we will shift to full reconstruction. We will be adding curb and gutter and enclosed storm sewer. So all the drainage right now that's running off the road and eroding the shoulder that doesn't exist, that'll be replaced with a two-foot uh, curb width and enclosed storm sewer to fix drainage problems. We will be realigning Mill Barn Road from the south to align with California Street to the north. And we will be adding sidewalk along the south side of forty-seven from the strip mall on the west side of town, all the way over to the park and adding a roundabout at thirty-eight and forty-seven. So we've broken this work and, and what this handout shows is we've broken this work down into four different phases. The first phase is that widening that I was talking about from county line to about Wesco Boulevard, give or take a few feet there. That will be just the widening work and phase two is Wesco Parkway to Mill Barn Road where we will be doing the full pavement replacement, sidewalk, storm sewer, all the good stuff. Phase three will then be from Mill Barn to the Biddle Park Drive off of forty-seven, just west of thirty-eight intersection. Uh, same thing, full replacement. And then the fourth phase is the roundabout at forty-seven and thirty-eight. Uh, the first phase, you guys have seen the notice of road closure out on our afterdate's already up. We've put out a press release. Uh, hot off the presses as of this afternoon, we will not be closing forty-seven this year. We will be pushing the full closure of phase one to start in the spring. But you will still see, starting in a few weeks, uh, some full depth patching and, um, resurfacing because the pavement is so bad and we can't get through another winter. So you will still see construction activity in a few weeks going through the fall to patch up the road, but we will not have the first phase full closure until spring of twenty-six. Um, our plan then is for all the phases, we'll start, start from the west and head east and move into the different phases. Uh, spring of twenty-six will be phase one and phase two. Phase three will be closer to summertime and phase four, which is the roundabout again, will be fall of twenty-six. Potentially into spring of twenty-seven, we're actively working with a contractor to figure out a phasing that gets everything done next year. But I did want to go ahead and let everyone know a heads up, there is a chance that the roundabout work could trail into twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, not ideal, but it's what we're, uh, trying to deal with, with some of the utilities that are still actively working out there as you guys have all seen and driven through over the past year. Um, they're making progress, but we have to, we depend on their schedule before we can start our work. Um, the big thing of notes about each phase, phase one, Hamilton and Boone County Line will remain open during this closure. So you will be able to go north, south on, uh, Hamilton Boone County Line. Phase two, Mill Barn Road and California Street will be open in phase two. It's not until phase three that, that those two intersections will close. Phase four, the roundabout forty-seven will be closed during the roundabout construction, but thirty-eight will remain open during all phases of roundabout construction. Um, so thirty-eight will still, you'll still be able to get in and out of town on thirty-eight. Only forty-seven will be closed for the roundabout. Of course, our timings, obviously, we're saying our dates in seasons because it's hard to pinpoint exact dates with a lot of unknowns that are out there with road construction. So this at least gives you a high level overview of when different phases will begin. Um, access to properties within the closure limits will always be maintained. What it exactly looks like is dependent on the contractor's phasing for how they're going to build the road, but they will always maintain access. So that's the number one question we get when you hear road closure. Uh, and how it will be maintained will be communicated by the contractor directly with the property owners so that they are always aware if it's going to change from coming from the east or coming to the west. But they will always maintain that communication directly with property owners. Um, happy to entertain any questions while I'm here. Again, I have this handout for anyone to take. There is a link, uh, to the website. It's a short URL that you can type in. So all this information is also available on the website with renderings of what the project will look like when it's done. Um, I do have a contractor here with us tonight as well, um, and our construction team. So again, happy to answer questions here or also we'll hang around in the back after if anyone wants to meet us in the back and ask any specific questions.
Jennifer, I've got one.
Yes.
Um, hi, nice to meet you. Um, we were under the impression that on or about September twenty-second, that it looks like phase one was going to start. You're saying that that is not going to happen?
Correct.
Till spring now?
Correct.
So no closure in the next
As of today, so you're going to see those signs come down by the end of the week. You're going to see us put out a new press release redacting that date and showing that the work will be postponed until next spring. But just to emphasize, you will still see flagging and road crews doing some paving and patching just to get us through the winter.
Glad you went first.
Literally a minute before I hit print, so I had a chance to change the date. I mean, it was.
You guys don't need to come.
Well, that's not good. Well, we're here to answer. Yes. Yes, mail service and trash service are things that our contractor will maintain access and communication with. Yep. And if there are ever any concerns, I let, um, I have some cards I'll leave on the table too. Feel free to reach out to me if there are any, if it's trash, any issue that could possibly come up and I can connect, uh, whatever the concern is to the right person to get it resolved.
Jennifer, I got one thing. I'm going to take my town council hat off and put my transportation director hat on. Yesterday, the flagging operations were awful. Um, the buses could not get on and off of the side roads onto State Route forty-seven. They were sitting for ten to fifteen minutes before the flaggers would let them out.
Okay.
So when they're doing the strip patching, if they could just bear with us for half an hour, because I've got four buses that go on and off of forty-seven four different times a day. And that screws up the whole schedule of the day. So
I would love to get specific time windows. Now, when our road construction crews are out there doing the flagging, it's our construction crews and we can make sure it's maintained. Everything now is utilities and we do our best to pass the message along.
Understood.
But we can continue to do that because
I spoke to a gentleman yesterday and he didn't really find humor in my attitude, but you know, it kind of is what it is.
Yeah, we can assure you that our crews will, will absolutely make sure we're doing appropriate flagging because nobody should be sitting for that long at all.
Yeah, thank you.
And further questions for Jennifer? Thank you for coming tonight.
Right, yeah, and I'll be hanging out in the back if anyone in the audience has questions.
Thank you.
Good.
Um, Indiana American Water, who is here from Indiana American Water?
Blackfield has requested to be on the agenda to discuss something related to chief policy.
So that's this report.
All right, moving on to Sharon Events Committee.
Hi, Jessica Sample with Sheridan Events Committee and my committee behind me. Um, obviously, NDOT just took probably twenty minutes off of what I had to talk about. Um, thank you, NDOT. Um, however, on the flip side, so, A, um, we have had radio silence from pretty much everyone the past couple of weeks. We have to get our alcohol safety plan approved. Um, so any, any hope in doing that would be appreciated. And then, um, so from Nielsen. So
We have a meeting, a second meeting with the departments at the end of this month, but
We need it.
Been asking for it and writing since we were in the lines.
Um, and then on the other side of that, it's just a communication breakdown. I know we have struggled with communication this whole time. Um, and I would just really beg and plead, these last two weeks are very detrimental and there's a lot of timelines that we're hitting. Um, and please respond to emails, everyone. It's, it's important. We are down to crunch time. So, um, and then I guess whether this is you guys or NDOT, um, fall of twenty-twenty-six, we also would like to plan um, Harvest Moon on Main Street, also the first weekend in October, I sent the committee, um, those dates for the next five years. Um, and so I just want to double check and make sure that the NDOT construction plans are not going to get in the way of that.
Well, you just listened to what she said, so we don't have hard dates, but we'll do our best to work with
So I happen to know that NDOT does work with the town, that if there is a festival, they will work around that. So commitment from town council is that you guys will be our voice and you will make sure that NDOT is fully aware of our festival on those dates.
We will do our best to accommodate everyone.
Thank you.
So I guess, do we have approval then to continue this year's Harvest Moon on Main Street?
Um, I don't have a problem with it. We approved it previously.
Right.
For the, the audience, last Thursday, roughly nine AM, we realized that um, NDOT was closing State Route forty-seven at the exact same time that we had Main Street closed for the Harvest Moon. And talking amongst ourselves, the public safety was a concern with EMS fire. Um, and all traffic through town would be routed through White Avenue, which we're currently in litigation because that road is really bad. Um, so we approached the events committee to move Harvest Moon to park because we felt it was a safety issue. We all just learned something new today in the last five minutes, so I'm fine with continuing our Main Street as planned.
Yeah, without the construction.
The only concern that we have is you guys requested two days shutdown. But in reality, it's a two and a half day shut.
So NDOT did approve the two and a half days.
But so communication.
That's fair. That's fair. That, that is part of our plan.
Okay, we, up here, we didn't know about Friday at six PM, so communicate with us, but we'll try. I mean, but yeah, as far as I'm concerned, everybody have a problem with continuing our Main Street?
Okay.
You're good to go.
Awesome. Thanks.
And then our next meeting for the department heads and all of you, of course, are invited is September twenty-fifth at twelve PM at Greek's Pizza.
What was the date again?
September the twenty-fifth.
Okay, and they've all been notified?
Uh, at the meeting and then we are sending out another invite.
Okay.
That we will include all of you guys on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments about any of the presentations? Okay. Pardon, pertaining to this?
No.
Okay.
A new item.
Well, it'll be at the bottom of it. Don't forget, write it down.
Okay.
That's, that's, that's down here. We'll go to the order.
I'll do that. Thank you.
Yep. All right, up next is the consent agenda. Looks like we have seven items on the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions, concerns with that?
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Hey Jess, as you're leaving, you tell your group to, if they want to talk, to go outside because it all echoes back in. Thank you. They're all standing right, right out there. Uh, old business, two hundred thirty-six street reconstruction project update.
Counselors, uh, last Thursday, uh, we met myself, Kirby, Mr. Danny Foot and, uh, if we're met C and T, they are engineer record design and line, two hundred thirty-six corridor uh, from bridge two oh one into, uh, thirty-eight, but also help navigate the, uh, other funding process. At the end of this month, perhaps early next month, they will bring in some design options for you to consider. This will have to approve, but to give you an idea of what the road profile, uh, would look like and give you, again, options, uh, variations of what we're around about two thirty-six, six points, uh, involved. Uh, and so there's several decisions, uh, laying out there in the horizon that you will have to make. But this is the first major step of bringing that corridor design team. So just a little update, we are progressing through that, uh, project in a very infancy. But, uh, later this month or perhaps even early next month, they'll have more substantive documents for you to consider and give them direction. I haven't had any questions, but that's, uh, let's think rebook.
It was a very informative work session on that. Um, I was pretty impressed with the, the group that, that came. So anybody have my questions? Moving on to new business, we have resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, resolution of the town of Sheridan and in Indiana, accepting the Purdue Pharma Plan and governmental entities settlement agreement.
It is an issue that has way to, uh, this inbox, I believe, uh, after the week. This, uh, is a request to join, um, a, uh, settlement plan for the Pharma, uh, the point of government, governmental entities settlement agreement. Uh, in the past, the, uh, state AG has been, has been in charge of, uh, the litigation surrounding this. This is a little bit of a different traditional settlement, um, involving bankruptcy of the, the Sack, Sack of family. So this increases the payment, uh, that the family, uh, will be paying towards, uh, veteran communities. And this also, uh, allow direct sign-on, uh, for the town. Uh, we don't, you won't have to go through the, the state, uh, settlement plan to get your disbursement. Um, so, so, uh, this is requiring sign-on by September thirtieth, uh, such as in the affirmative vote to join up. You have to opt-in, you don't opt-in.
Okay. Excuse me, any questions?
Is this a specific funding dispersment model? Like, are these monies directed toward, uh, remediation efforts for drug use?
Exactly.
Does the town have an appropriate fund to, this may be very early in that process, but are we set up to receive those monies?
I think it's a little early to specifically know. We have a good plan set up, but, um, yeah, exactly. It goes remediation of the fact of, right? Again, you all know, what the house number will be on that, but
Okay. There's no questions or entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, resolution of the town of Sheridan, Indiana, accepting the Purdue Pharma Plan and governmental and the entities settlement agreement.
I second it.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, Sheridan Public Library, twenty twenty-six budget appropriations. So I welcome Kim and whoever you would like to come up. Yeah, we're putting her on the spot.
I am Kim Riley. I'm the director of the Sheridan Library. Um, I don't have a formal presentation or anything. I believe you have already been, have received our budget. Um, so this needs to be the public hearing for that and you will adopt it then in two weeks.
Does anybody have any questions for Kim? We'll open the public hearing.
Let, let me give a little explanation. Um, Michael, you weren't here. Due to the reorganization, um, the town council is now the library's fiscal body. Normally, the library board will approve their own budget, but because of the bond issue that you have already approved, it puts it over the amount that we have to have a binding review this year. This will be a one-year thing. We'll be going back to the normal process next year.
Thank you. So it is six twenty-two PM. I'm opening a public hearing. If anyone would like to come up and ask a question, comment? Anybody? So it is six twenty-two and I am closing the public hearing. Um, is there any, uh, questions from council on this? I know Michael missed some of this. Um, this has gone on for quite some time, some, some in-depth conversations on this. Uh, Mr. Higgins has reviewed all of this. Um, he is perfectly fine with, with how this looks. Is there any input you want to give Mr. Higgins or we good to go?
You're good to go.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, um, entertain a motion.
To be ordinance, be on your agenda.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Do we want to suspend?
I think this is just the public hearing for, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other new business? Seeing none, are there any finance budget updates?
No, sir.
Thank you. Attorney report.
We have a couple of things. Uh, we were informed that there's, that the council would like to have some discussion at some point about parking regulations. We made a copy of your current parking ordinance. You do have through ordinance ability, you can do about whatever you want with parking, uh, prohibited, it's, it's timeless. All, uh, all types of items like that. There's very little, uh, parking regulation in the Indiana code outside of uh, not blocking the fire zones and, uh, handicap spots, uh, and forbidden spots rather. So we're happy to undertake a change of the ordinance, but you all might want to, we'll be at first. See, I know you, there's some instructions about prohibiting parking in, uh, public, in the town's parking. That can be done. You can set timing limits on it.
That can be done. You can set timing limits on it. Typically, it's over a period of a day or two overnight. That's a problem. Yeah. I can do that also. We also have, um. A draft of the F E D, uh, vehicle ordinance. When you look at it before you act it, when it, uh, Department of Labor, so I wish you'd look at all that, uh, planning.
Yeah, this was drafted with the intention of regulating traffic between thirty one and the, uh. Intersection of thirty eight, forty seven here in town, um, with the idea that it would see increased truck traffic, um, with surrounding destruction. So a couple of things that are required first is that you have to have signage in place at each end of these roadways. Director Kirby has connected with end up officials. They're happy to put up that signage, uh, on thirty one. But we have proof of the capacity of the ordinance. So that's something that, uh, keep in mind. And then, uh, another thing keep in mind is, uh. Gross weight and fine amount, um. Something you are comfortable with, we can play with that. And I think something totally wise would be, uh, check the chief Nelson and take care that he's. Ready to enforce this.
We discuss this tonight?
Uh, you can discuss it. If it's not, it's not on your agenda to be, uh, an action item that we thought that it was working. Get it in your hands and take a look at it. This wasn't a boiling plate thing.
So the total gross weight less than ten thousand pounds. Is that a number you came up with or is that just?
Something that I researched.
Okay.
Uh, you ran this value, but.
How does that fall under that?
How it was.
Ag.
So there are exceptions to do with it, uh, section B.
Haven't got that far. The ten thousand just stood out. That's at the top. So I'll I'll kind of back up and read it all and then we'll have questions.
But there are there are.
Thought I had it. Okay.
Yeah, I brought that up last.
Well, I do. So I drive a large truck. One ton crew cab long bed and that thing is right at eight thousand pounds empty. So we might want to, if I'm pulling a a trailer, a small trailer, it's, I could be over that. Ten. So we might want to look at twelve. Because I think my license plates are up to twelve. Just throwing that out there.
Counsel, you've got our email. I'll be looking this and you see something here in the next few weeks. Let us know. We'll change content for all of it to kind of double check on the lines and, uh. We'll get it on the agenda for action at the next meeting if you're ready for that.
Okay.
I was suggesting not open it and implement a, uh, injury, uh, that's a thing that actually goes worse term. Don't have any idea what it means for us.
I was getting ready to be my question because I was not sure what that.
Well, well, enlighten us. What is it?
Farm equipment.
Okay.
Fancy ways of saying.
Why not?
A couple of things, um, we, uh. We continue to try to find a non-trial solution to the white avenue situation. But we're getting here at fully pretrial conference and trial in the manner that's been set for November of next year. Uh, by moving one of our litigators, uh, into getting deep into this, we are going to take your breaths, settle it. You're always better off selling settling in for less than you, uh, if like it's worth to avoid the expenses of trial. Because there will be seven or eight, uh, depositions involved with this. Uh, in a three and a half days trial has been scheduled, so it's it's not an inexpensive proposition. So we will continue to try to find a solution. We're trying to find some different costing. Uh, that is to figure out exactly, if you know, that the the road itself, the bid was less than two hundred thousand dollars to install commercial lights. There's been, uh, of course, nine years of increases in prices and nine years of use. Uh, by the town, but none of it. So there's some depreciation in there too, but we'll we'll try to bring something to the council with point. Uh, quite reasonable. Uh, the other item this attracted most of my attention has been the, uh, grievance. Uh, bond issue and, uh, economic developments agreements. Uh, we have meetings next. We actually announced that here on your, uh, list of upcoming meetings. There is an economic development mission hearing and meeting on nine twenty three at five P M. And then following that is the R D C, uh, to consider a confirmatory resolution. To the declaratory resolution, declaratory resolution created the thirty one acre green projects allocation area. The economic development mission will adopt. Uh, and recommend to the council. A, uh, financing agreement, an economic development agreement and a, uh, bond ordinance. They will adopt those for this. I'm like, that's come to you. Uh, I heard yesterday lawyer for the developer, which is the first time we hear lawyer on it. He has issues with what we presented so far. We'll work through that in the next few days. And I believe we have, uh, adequate acceptance for both the E D C hearing and the R D C hearing.
Were you able to get hold of Steve Martin?
Yes.
Okay.
Steve got back and then worldwide for getting a tour. And, uh, a-actually did not take my emails. Saw my emails, but presumed they were political solicitations because of my name. Uh, that's true. There are two sources. So, uh, we we are in communication. He asked Jim today what the agenda was. I'll follow up on that, Jim, and, uh, ensure that materials go top for the members of R D C.
Okay, want to revisit the parking ordinance?
Sure.
You said.
So just want everyone on the council to be aware that currently we do have a two hour parking ordinance on Main Street. There is no signage and we have not been enforcing it. But we need to consider, do we want to keep that a two hour parking? I think it's between the hours of eight and six or something like that, but, um, definitely look at that.
There are.
There are.
Yeah, there are signs for those people.
Okay.
We need a parking lots.
Right, this will will tie into the parking lots as well. But, um, just read through this and be prepared to discuss at the next meeting. You know, we're kind of having a parking wars issue right now.
That's why we handed this out. I suspect that you don't all know. Exactly what the parking regs are if they're posted someplace. So, uh, so that's what we bring this up for you so you can look at it and assess it. Again, let us know if you're ready. Make your decisions. You're ready next time. We'll be ready for that. If you need time to, I have to do that too.
Okay.
At least we may consider adding, uh, for consistency purposes. Uh, streets that are, uh, newly constructed in basically on.
Center place.
Center place. They're not, they're not listed in this this table. So, uh, either it needs to be, you know, also I'll work with Director Kirby and what those streets are. Present a few of your bits over here.
Okay.
That's it.
Any questions on any of this? Moving on to the Monon Trail Phase Two Ribbon Cutting. Um, this is October third, twenty twenty five at ten A M. Michelle, do you have anything you want to discuss on this?
Uh, no, I have flyers in the back that anybody wants to, I picked one up, uh, about, uh, some guest speaker was, uh, I communicated with the Ross and three teams.
Joe, do you want to give an update on the Monon? That way you didn't drive here for nothing.
Oh, it's always entertaining. Appreciate the time. It's always nicer when I don't talk to. So, uh, Joe Miller, Banning Engineering. Uh, Monon Trail, um, it is virtually complete. A few other mi- few minor things to do. We're working on scheduling a. Stamped substantial completion and punch list, um, to work through and, um, that should be kind of. Phasing this thing out and be ready for the the ribbon cutting. So we're.
So I haven't been down there. Sinage, ballards?
Uh, there are, the ballers are not installed yet. Um, there's the gate at the end. It's not installed yet. We still need to walk through, make sure everything else is there, what needs to be, but, uh. It's pretty much done. There's some, there's quite a bit of signage up, um, but not all of it yet.
Okay, and you want to do a walk through?
Uh, we're just working on getting a schedule between us and the contractor and Commissioner Kirby and see.
Yeah, I don't need to be there. I just.
Yeah, yeah, they, uh, they've done a pretty decent job of keeping things moving along once they're able to get going and get their crews out there. So I thought it looked pretty good, but we'll. We'll walk through it. We've been keeping tabs on it during during the whole process, so.
Okay. Any questions for Joe?
Counsel, I just need to emphasize this is the significant, uh, square town and certainly the trail and the county is hard. Uh, we'd like Mr. Vane better to factor into this. Uh, he already has committed from, uh, one of the dues outfits in Indianapolis to cover this. It was out in Monon Trail that we complete to the county, accessible all the way downtown. Indianapolis. So it is can't be understated at this point. But we're truly trying to make this up. Come one, come all, that will benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
What was the date again?
Uh, October third. Any other general discussion items?
So homecoming is this weekend, right?
Yes.
Okay, homecoming is this weekend. So one big change is the fact that the parade is tomorrow night. Right, Eric?
Yes.
At five thirty. And, um, so just keep that in mind. It will slip up on you. Also, over the weekend of Harvest Moon, they're going to have the unveiling of the storefront. At three seventeen Main Street. It's the one that's all boxed in now, so you can't see it. They're going to have an unveiling of that. During the Harvest Moon Festival. I can't remember now which day, but anyway, I think you're going to find a, they've done a beautiful job on that building. Restoring it to its looks several years ago and so should be pretty exciting.
That it?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody have anything? General discussion? Seeing them will move on to public comment. Yes, Heidi, where's?
He's in city, yeah.
Doesn't sound.
Hello, Heidi with Sheridan Main Street Inc. I just want to, uh, make a comment on any of the parking regulations. Once that is in effect, if you wouldn't mind looping Sheridan Main Street Inc. in on it and we can help, um. Get the information out to the business owners so they know when it becomes into effect and all that kind of stuff. So we have. We have all the information for our business owners on Main Street, so we'd like to help with that.
Thank you. Um, we would like input from your group. On that review and let us know if you see anything.
Okay.
Here's you guys. Anyone else for public comment?
I'm Lisa Bragg. I live on Fifth Street. Uh, my son is the government guy. I'm not, so I may not even need to ask this question here. And if this isn't right, I apologize. Um, I have a concern. There's a lot of kids in our community that are getting electric bikes. And they go way too fast on them. Um, we can sit on our front porch. The bikes are going faster than the cars. So I don't know. Is there a speed limit for the electronic bikes? Um. Is there some way we can slow these kids? I just don't want them to end up getting killed. And a lot of them aren't even stopping at the stop signs. They're just winging around the corner. And people travel faster on Fifth Street than they should. We've already had one kid several years ago get killed on here on Sixth Street. I just don't want to see it happen again.
They are so.
Okay. We just, we just got to find some way to slow these kids down. They're they're just. So, and I did have something else, but now, oh.
Two weeks, I've written three citations. Twice because the line is stopped. It's one people on the roof in Miami. So we are enforcing the rules that are required. They won't make sense if they don't follow the rules of the roads and it's fine. Or they can decide any fault. So we're doing this a lot of them.
I just can't do a citizen's arrest until these kids stop, yeah.
Um, but you can call enough to give showing the information for the day.
Okay.
They take this along and pull the right control.
Okay. And I have one other question. Uh, the speed limit signage. I know you guys have talked about this in the past. When you turn onto Jerkwater just north of First Street, I think it is, it says the speed limit is twenty miles an hour. When does that twenty mile an hour stop? Because my parents live just south of two hundred and sixty first street. There is no other speed limit anywhere along. It's twenty all the way up. I just need to let my dad know, you know? I I don't want the ninety year old to get pulled over for speeding, so I'm I'm just. Yeah. So I I was just wondering where that twenty stops and what it is beyond that.
True. Uh, I don't have an answer for that, but we'll look into that.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's direct to Kirby and see what we can do there. Thank you. Go ahead, Harvey.
Thank you, counsel. Uh, Harvin Gillum, uh, Sheridan, Indiana. Uh, so actually a real quick comment though on that twenty miles an hour in Jerkway. I are on California. I think it's really funny. It's twenty, but if you go in into the subdivision, it's twenty five in there. So I I just think that's kind of an odd. So everybody's going to cut off the increase depending. That's a, anything. I just, what I really wanted to talk about was, um, with, uh, this Harvest Moon Festival on Main Street. It's an interesting thing that that, uh, that happened with that because. Back when, uh, there was a chamber of, uh, Sheridan Chamber of Commerce, I was the president, uh, for many years and, um. At that time, you know, the Sheridan Harvest Moon was a big deal. It was in Biddle Park. The chamber was part of that planning process and everything that this committee is doing is really just amazing to me that they're they're handling it the way they are. Um, I remember Connie Pearson, who was a former former, uh, town council, uh, uh, member as well as former clerk of the town. She was a big part of the Harvest Moon Festival. My point of all saying all of this is that what's very interesting is all during that time that was in Biddle Park. Every single year. A plethora of citizens would always be asking. Why can't you have this on Main Street like it used to be? Everybody always asks that every year and every year we said, it just doesn't seem to work out. I'm just really proud of this committee that they've figured out a way to get it back on Main Street like everybody's been asking for years and years and years. Hopefully it'll be a huge success and, uh, I think it's, I think it's wonderful that they've made the effort to do that. So at least. The citizens of Sheridan can finally see the Harvest Moon Festival back on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? You have something, Julia? Sure. All right. Um. Actions to pay accounts payable vouchers.
I'll make mostly paid account payable vouchers.
Second.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, um. Standing by the council president, I want to thank all of our supporting cast for everything they they they're doing, they've done. Um, I've sat through multiple meetings this week. Um. I'm trying to give you guys a little background. I don't want to sound like one of our commissioner or county councilmen of doing the work, but. We did sit through a meeting, um, with our legal staff, three and a half attorneys. It's really expensive meeting, I think, on litigation. But there's a half attorney in there. Um. No, um, I did have an interesting conversation with the president of Cicero's Town Council. Um. For about six, eight weeks ago, uh, Mike Keenholz and I both visited their meeting. Um, they've been openly discussing that the town of Sheridan is broke in their chamber during their meetings. We kindly asked them to, please stop saying that. We're not broke. And that lasted for about six weeks. And then on their September second meeting. Um, Mr. Cox, president stated that Sheridan is living off of the sale of the utility water. And council member Emily Pearson said that. Our tax rates are going up and we have brown water. So I had a nice meeting with him and we both see eye to eye now and they're, he said he would. Push the message to his staff. Not to discuss Sheridan in their meetings and we're not going to discuss Cicero in ours. I don't believe we have before and what they do is what they do over there. Um, they've got as many issues as we have over here, so, um, we just kind of want to keep thirty one as the great goal of China and. Be neighborly. So that's how I explained it to him and my pleasant personality and I hope it it works well. Being neighborly, so that's how I explained it to him and my pleasant personality, and I hope it it works well. Um. I'm glad that the events committee uh and N dot. That that really worked out well, because this was not going to be a very short meeting tonight, I don't think. Um. I'm happy to see that the county has. Finally realized that the residents of our community do not wanna trail on Dunbar Road, I don't know if anyone's following that, but. As of right now, there is no trail in the plan. Um. We were. It was mentioned that we are not forward thinking, um I think we are forward thinking and listening to our residents. If a trail is needed out there down the road, I'm sure we'll implement a trail someplace that looks for everyone. Um but today, it's more disruptive than it is needed. Even though I did go out to Skylake and take a little tour of what they're doing out there, and there were people jogging on Dunbar Road. But no, it is not needed, they it was a fluke, but um. Just everyone's really working hard, and and we're just, we're coming together and then things are starting to shape up. Um. I do have a question for Liz, do you know when your furniture is arriving? For your new office? Okay. Well, that was my next question, where are we at with the carpet?
He said he made it right, but I would be waiting under six days for a different partner.
No, do does he have something available that works? So can we put down what we have? Uh I. I didn't. I didn't pick it out, so I don't know, and I I didn't pick it out, so I don't know, I haven't seen it.
What we got now was picked out and say it was. It's all pictures. And then squares, some were brown, some were gray, it was blue, gray, they were supposed to be brown, black, gray.
So it came in.
Okay.
And then what are you gonna do? Get new windows or not?
Uh it's not in the.
So that is a little bit of a lot on film, and you was gonna possibly do that.
No, um. I was not here at the meeting where it was voted to add the film to the windows, the ballistic film. Um in my inspection of that facility and per the contractor, those windows need to be replaced sooner than later. And it wasn't discussed to replace them this year. So I think we'll maybe look into a budget item for twenty twenty six to see if we can replace those next year. Um. So I don't see any point in putting ballistic film on windows for five thousand dollars, when we probably in the next twenty four months, we're gonna be replacing all of the windows, but. I wasn't here for that vote, so. I don't know if you guys wanna discuss this and figure out next meeting, but I wanna wrap that building up so we can move on to this building. And get the process going. Cause since we're done with this building, we need to to redo where Liz is leaving. To expand offices and the the police department. And a conference room for them, so um. I guess baby steps, we need to push on the carpet and see if they have something available. If not, get our money back and let's go somewhere that has some carpet available, we don't, we're not locked into that store.
Give our. Give it back.
Or find something over there, like I said, I I had nothing to do with the carpet other than saying let's put some carpet in. Um. Well, so so we have squares, right? Well, then let's put it down. Huh? Well, commercialists also in squares, so you can remove them. Any discussion on this?
Did we already buy the film or?
You approved it, but I don't know where it's at.
You get, I asked her to get pulled off on it, till we can discuss the windows.
I don't have a quote on windows. I don't know, Michelle, do you know anything, how old those windows are, but I know there's a lot of rotten wood.
Nineteen ninety five.
Yeah.
So we've, it's gotten its lifespan out of them. Um. I just don't see any point in putting five thousand dollar. Film on windows that are. Thirty five years old. Um. But anyway, carpet's the main thing, we need to figure out the carpet ASAP, so. Um but I wanna thank all of our department heads, employees, staff, consultants. Um. Which is, it's been a long year so far, and it's starting to really come together, and the events committee is just kind of a cherry on top with with their events, so. That's all I've got, um our next meeting. Tuesday, October seventh at six P M, um other boards that are meeting, B Z A, September eighteenth. At five thirty, Advisory Plan Commission is at six thirty on the eighteenth. R D C is nine twenty three. Uh at, it follows the Economic Development Meeting, uh or nine twenty three at five P M, and that's in here.
Here.
So we need to make sure that someone is here for that meeting to turn the camera on, because there's only a limited number of people that know how to.
I can be here.
Since it's in here, it has to be recorded, right?
That's right.
So. That right now you're responsible for.
I'll be here.
Okay.
We start, E D C start, right?
So I want to take a motion to adjourn. Oh, yes.
Save for mine, you mentioned Dunbar Road earlier, I believe that the folks at Skylake. Uh maybe mention uh potential speed negotiation.
Oh, yes.
Unless the council will text, uh I work with Director Kirby and our engineering staff. Who uh addressed that, uh did I believe it posted fifteen, that we sit here tonight and?
It needs to be thirty thirty five or something.
Uh we'll we'll make sure we call the public vertical, I'll bring you uh.
Speaking of that, the road construction traffic. Is that two twenty six in Dunbar where the semis are heading west and turning south and north? The dump trucks have to take a wide turn, and they have rutted the asphalt up probably twelve inches on each side. It it's a monster hole.
They attempted to fix it today.
We we found this is our second trip out there today and fix it. So um I'm sure it's not the email, it's the business there.
They're not using that road.
They're bringing semis in and everything else, and yes, they're carrying that road to all teams.
Okay, so um N dot saying it's not them?
Yeah, correct, they.
Okay.
The 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 dump trucks coming in around the thirty one are supposed to come and enter and exit off of thirty one, not. And on two twenty six.
That's, I've been at the intersection and almost got hit by them, so I'll sit out there Friday and with the video and catch them. Um but it it's their dump trucks moving from thirty one west on two twenty six. I I know you know. But it's um, yes.
Okay, Dunbar Road just today. There were five dump trucks in the road, couldn't get out of my truck, but when they're coming up that road. I have to get off the road then, because there's not a room, they, they're really mean, so it's just.
Okay. Well, hopefully it'll. Get better soon, sooner than later, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move with your second.
A motion second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Be careful getting home.